Including people going to work real fast, too fast. And I really would like to see, on the north side and south side at least, school crossing or something like that to slow people down. That's all I'm asking. It's not much, just go get a hammer and pound them in and that'll be the end of it. You know, it's like there's another school on Spruce also down the other end. I don't even know the name of it, but it's down there. They have school crossings there. Why not at a preschool? After all, as far as I'm concerned, there's no such thing, too much safety for children. That's all I'm gonna say. Yeah, that's, I wanted to say this at 5:30 when everybody was here, but... Last time I was here, this place was rebuilt, I think?
Yes, we had some remodeling since last time you were here.
Okay. No, I thought I was in the wrong room. But here I am, and I'm speaking my piece, and I would like to hear somebody say something about it. I'll have a seat.
Thank you. Brian.
Do we, I think you're talking about...
Shover.
Yeah, Clarence Shover, right?
Yep.
Which is just north of...
Athletic.
Do we, just, maybe we look at, do we mark private schools or nurseries or daycares? I mean, I assume we haven't, correct? Is there like children present or there's signs in there?
Nothing at Children's Corner.
Do neighborhoods petition, like if they get like, you know, those signs that say "Children have to play," or, you know, "Slow children"? Is that a neighborhood thing?
You know, we've gone away from putting those up. They're just not effective. But it is a school, so, I mean, preschool, I think.
Yeah, I don't know what the rules are for, you know, there's always so many rules and regulations, and I guess I would maybe check with Brian to know for sure what constitutes a school for the law or for the... But we'll certainly look into it.
Certainly, certainly look into it. Thank you, Ron.
Sir?
We're certainly gonna look into it, so...
And then, that's it? I could go home? Is that what you're saying?
Or you're welcome to stay for our meeting as well.
Not the full meeting. I don't know what's going on, but I'm not very comfortable around this lot of people.
All right, but thank you for being here, sir.
Driving a semi over the road, you just gave me no challenge.
Good evening, everyone. I'd ask that you please rise as we have our invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Wise and loving God, we stand before you with the hands, the minds, and the hearts that you have given us. Help us to put our hands at your service to the work of our city. Bless our minds to understand the best way to help those less fortunate. And we ask that you give all of our hearts the ability to inspire the actions that our minds conceive. We pray for these things in your holy name. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
5:30, October 1st, 2018, I will call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. First item on the agenda this evening is the approval of the agenda, and I will call on City Administrator Andrew Brumseth for any additions or corrections.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor, Members of the Council. Good evening. As noted on the new agenda on your desks this evening, item H1, which is a resolution accepting a vacation petition for Deerfoot Lane, will be removed from the agenda, and we'll have that at the Committee of the Whole next week.
Thank you, Andrew. With that, I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
For that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Scott. All favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign that motion carries. There are no public hearings, there are no bids, and there are no petitions and communications this evening. Item G under the, on the agenda is the consent agenda. There's a copy in your packet. Lynn's also put a copy on the screens for us. If there's any items that anyone would like to talk about individual, we will remove them. If not, I would entertain a resolution approving the consent agenda.
Oh, for that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Justin.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Darren. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Amen.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
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 You want to, we just, I've gone.
That resolution is approved. Yes, Anthony?
Hey, I would just like to make note that we are buying this off the center from a local, a local business, and I think that's admirable. And I also understand that the comforting is being done by a local business in Sealand, so I think that's doubly admirable.
Yeah, that's a good point, and just to make note, that's $251,000 of...
Going back into our community.
For, sure, so, thank you, Aaron. All right, thank you, Anthony. Under ordinance and resolutions, we will need a resolution approving the City of Fergus Falls acting as the fiscal host and the applicant for a auto Bremmer Trust grant in the amount of $100,000 to help fund the operations of the greatest, Greater Fergus Falls Corporation.
All our favor.
Thank you, Brad. Is there any further questions or discussion on that?
Just note, Your Honor, the deadline for that grant is tomorrow, so this is all that's left, and we'll, we'll submit it on their behalf tomorrow morning.
Thank you. Thank you, Andrew. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. This evening, we have claims in the amount of $1,377,633.09, and if there's any questions, I will direct them to our Public Works Director.
Sure. I got a question. I got, I got a question for him.
Scott?
I have five, but that's, I'll offer that.
Thank you, Scott.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. There are no board committee and department reports. Under reports from staff and administrative officers, I'll call on Andrew Brumseth, City Administrator, to give us an update on the letter of intent from the Fergus Falls Gymnastics.
Thank you, Your Honor, Members. I'll keep it real brief this evening. Today, October 1st, marks the 90-day deadline, or per letter of intent period, due diligence period complement, or, excuse me, contemplated in the letter of intent that we approved a few months ago. And so I wanted to give the council a real quick update tonight and then seek some further guidance as to how we want to move things forward from here. I will say that we have not successfully reached a purchase agreement or a development agreement. There has been some due diligence activities that have taken place. There has been a tour of the facility. There have been contractors that have looked at the facility on behalf of the gymnastics academy, but we have not been able to, to get to the point of having a purchase agreement or development agreement ready in time to satisfy this deadline. There are some due diligence items that remain and some other work that has to be done. So with that being said, the letter of intent contemplated that the, that it expired after 90 days without further action. I did speak with a representative of the gymnastics academy earlier this afternoon, and they were seeking, or they were hoping to seek, they, they were under the impression they had a week or two longer until we hit the deadline, but they were going to seek an extension from the city, and they contemplated an additional 90 days. And I informed them that we are fairly close to being ready to go out for bids for the demolition of these three buildings, so a 90-day extension likely is something that the city would have to, have to have further discussion on. But I did say that I think it would be more appropriate, if we wanted to continue working on this, to go month by month, knowing that then, when we are ready for demolition, bidding and moving that side of things forward, that we'd have the ability to do that without having to wait at all. So, tonight, I'm looking for some guidance from the City Council if we want to extend this thing another month and see if we can reach the finish line or see if there's, there's feasibility there, or if we want to, you know, thank them for their efforts and move on and go full steam ahead on the demolition track that we've obviously been talking a lot about and contemplating for quite some time. So, that's where we're at tonight. I'd be glad to answer any questions. Again, there hasn't been substantial progress made and looking to see what you guys want to do next.
Thank you, Andrew.
Is, I mean, is there a draft purchase agreement going backwards and forwards at all?
Your Honor, Councilmember Hicks, we have provided a draft purchase agreement and floated it to the gymnastics academy for comment, and what I understand as of today, their attorney has looked at it, but I have not received any feedback on that draft.
So, Andrew, the 30 days, what does that, if their request on the 30-day extension, what does that do to our timeline? Is there, is it gonna impact negatively the progress that we're making on the other fronts?
Yeah, Your Honor, Members, we're waiting for that final green light from the State Historic Preservation Office. I'm looking at Brian. We don't know exactly when that's gonna be, but we're hoping sooner than later. We have received comments on the 90 percent submittal, and we've responded to those, and we're just really waiting for that final finish line. And then we would like to proceed with bidding as quickly as possible just to ensure that, you know, we can get on a schedule for somebody and be right away in the weather over the winter, if not right away in the early spring. We envision a three-week bidding period for this work, so there is a little bit of time in there, but we don't want to have that process slowed down by something like this. Or, or staff's recommendation is not to slow that process down, I should say.
Do you, so, you think the 30-day extension, would that, we don't know if that would...
I think at this point in time, we certainly have another 30 days before we would award a contract, because the bid period is, is a minimum of three weeks, and I don't envision in the next week that we get that final green light. It's not to say it's not possible, but I think there's some things that have to be fixed or resolved before we're able to get that.
Councilmember Hicks?
I would make a motion to give them another month, but I think that would be it.
Make it clear that there's 30-day extension, but then we're...
30-day extension, correct. Yep.
Need a resolution on the ultimate extension? Yes.
I'll make that resolution.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Scott? I just, if they were, if, you know, Andrew talked to them today, if they were that up on getting an extension, there would have been somebody here to speak to us tonight and ask for it. I don't think we should go reach out and extend it to them just because, I mean, we know, I know we have time, but if I'm in that seat and I'm looking for an extension, I'd be standing here tonight asking for one. I don't think it's our position to, to extend it out for no reason. I mean, I'm just, that's my opinion, and I, I wouldn't vote for one, but it just, I think we should, we got a great man on going on demolition. They know we still be giving 90 days. They're not gonna, there's a lot of work to be done for them to come up with something for us to, to look at, I believe, that we, you know, viable things, and I don't think they're there. I don't, I don't know, but I'm just saying it's, there's a lot of work for them to do if they want to come up with some plan.
This will give them the 30 days if they want...
Yeah, and, and, but they didn't ask for it, that's what I'm saying. They didn't...
No, I understand.
They, well, they did, they did. They asked for 90, then they asked for 60, then they asked for...
Well, I didn't, I didn't hear, I just heard they, they wanted a 90, but then they just backed off. Okay, I didn't know that, okay.
Well, Your Honor, Councilmember Rachel, that was today, that they, they started by asking for 90 days in a conversation with me, and I just said, I don't think that's gonna be possible. I would suggest, or what I would recommend to the council is, is 30 days at a time. We, we could certainly grant their request of 90 days, but I think this is more appropriate.
Then again, they should have been here too. I mean, they, I know they went through you, but I mean, if it would have been, I would have been standing at that desk saying, I need more time to get this done, we're close, but there's nobody here.
Your Honor, Councilmember Rachel, that I should mention is, is that this LOI, and I'm not advocating one way or the other, but it is non-binding, and so I think we need to make it clear in our resolution that if we are to get this green light and we are gonna be able to move forward, that we can terminate the letter of intent before the 30 days is up to move on that path if we're ready.
I'll agree with that.
That was in my resolution.
Yeah. Accept that as a second.
So, you're, 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 We're saying, we're saying 30-days extension?
The first or...
Well, no, I mean, 'cause obviously our next council meeting, you know, would be the fifth, so, I mean, if it's 30 days, then obviously tomorrow is the second, so we'd be fine at the 31st. They'd have to have something back to us by the 31st, which would be obviously a few days before the next council meeting.
Now, Your Honor, Councilmember Hicks would allow to get it in the packet for that meeting as well?
Yep.
Yep, right.
All clear?
Yep.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
No.
Abstain.
Fish?
Yes.
Rachel?
No.
Thompson?
No.
Anderson?
Yes.
That resolution fails.
So, Your Honor, Members, just to, just to reiterate, because this agreement was to not renew automatically, because we haven't done anything, this letter of intent would be terminated as of today.
So, can I get clarification on the voting? Was it a simple majority? Need five to pass a resolution. Five yes votes. I need five for this one, because we have one council member missing, and we still need five. Right, but you still need five affirmative votes. For a resolution as opposed to a motion. Right. Well, even if you had a motion, you had a 3-3 tie with one abstaining, which would fall. That's what I was thinking, and I just wondered if that was, if it is a resolution level on this case, or, and, and if it's a tie, wouldn't the mayor then offer that vote? I think an abstain, abstention counts as a no vote.
Oh, it does.
Yep, so either way, the reason that I think that it should be a resolution is because you're looking for some written action and some written communication that would simply say that we're extending, we're extending the letter of, of, of intent here another year. So, I mean, it's, I, I feel that based upon that, that it's a higher level than simply a motion, because it's direct, it's a directive to have this, probably your attorney, Mr. Mattson, reach out and provide some document that would extend it, so, but either way, with, with the abstention, that counts as a no vote. So, I mean, in, when you got, you'd have to have four yes votes on a motion with seven. Thank you, Ralph. Item number two is an update on unique opportunities, and I'll call on Amy Baldwin.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. As was discussed at the September 4th City Council meeting, we are providing an update for information and to review proposed changes to the development agreement that initially was entered into with unique opportunities back several years ago related to the apartments at 401 South Tower Road. As we talked about in September, there had been some outstanding site issues that significant progress had been made on, and the next steps that were continued to need, need addressing were the variance for the location of the building within the setback, the plat of the property separating the Phase 1 of the project from the balance of the property. We have those on the agenda for the Planning Commission to review both of those items at the next meeting, again, in accordance to what we had laid out back on September 4th. And then the other items that could be considered in conjunction with those two would be the amended and restated tax increment financing agreement, as well as the assignment of that development agreement to the new owner of the property that has, has transacted. So, in it, prior to bringing those for action, we thought it would be appropriate to review the changes and the reanalysis of the project to understand where, where it was looking at and what that amended and restated development agreement contemplated from an amount of assistance. So we have been working with Springstead, our financial advisor for this project, who did the initial TIF analysis back in 2016, and they have looked at the new numbers that have been provided by the developer to, again, contemplate or review what would an appropriate amount of assistance to make the project be viable and what that would be. So within your packet was included a memo that was drafted by Springstead, and we have with us here Tom Denaway from Springstead, who will be reviewing some background generally on tax increment financing, how that works, how districts are established, and then a review of the analysis that took place related to the scaled-back version of this project to be the single building, 36-unit building that we've been discussing most recently at the City Council. So with that, I will turn it over to Tom Denaway to walk through some information, and then we'll have additional discussion.
Thank you, Amy. I'm Mayor, Members of the Council. My name is Tom Denaway. I'm with Springstead Incorporated. We are the city's financial advisory firm. I specifically do economic development on behalf of Springstead. Important thing to mention about Springstead is we only do work for public entities. We do not do any work on behalf of private developers. We only represent public entities, cities, counties, school districts, and the like, and, as well as nonprofits. So that's kind of our specific, specific area of expertise. I do economic development work both in Minnesota as well as Kansas and Missouri. As previously mentioned, I worked on this project when the TIF district was originally created, and we will kind of go through some of the things. To begin with, a bit of an overview of tax increment financing, talk about what qualifies a district as a housing district, and then we'll get into kind of what the change of the scope was and what some of the modifications would be to some of the development agreements and some of the related documentation as part of this. So to begin with, is everybody hearing me all right?
Yeah, you guys.
Okay. So what is TIF? TIF is a method of capturing the future tax base growth resulting from new development. It captures those new local taxes, that incremental gain in taxes to pay for public improvements related to the development. And there's a fixed term for the capture of that increment, and then the new development ultimately gets added to the tax base. So TIF is defined by state statute. It's constantly being refined by the legislature, not quite on an annual basis, but it has been refined numerous times over the years. The intent of TIF is that it's a gap financing tool. It's to make projects occur that would not otherwise occur, but for the use of assistance. So it's, it's a tool of last resort. Depending on the year it was created, there's differing compliance requirements for, for the type of district, and it's used mainly by cities and counties, and it provides, and it helps to provide an incentive for development, or helps to make a development happen that would not otherwise happen but for the assistance. Here on the list, you can see that there's a number of different types of TIF districts that can be created. Depending on the type of TIF district, there has to be certain eligibility requirements, and depending on the type of TIF district, there's certain terms for the length of those districts. For a housing district, you have to create low and moderate income housing, and we'll get some more into the specifics of that in a little bit, but that allows for a term of 25 years from the first receipt of increment. So when you see the term of TIF districts listed, and usually in these numbers, this is the number of years from the first receipt. That's the way that statute's written, that's kind of the way it's measured, so it's all these years plus one. So for a housing district, it's a total of 26 years or 25 years from the first receipt to coincide with the way the statute's written. So what can we use those tax increment dollars to fund? We can use those to fund public improvements, land acquisitions, soil corrections, site prep demolition, relocation, financing fees and capitalized interest, as well as the city can retain up to 10% of them of the revenue for administrative purposes. Any expenditures that the city makes under the administrative portion of the increment has to be for costs directly related to the use of, or directly related to the administration of the TIF district. That money doesn't go into the general fund. It has to be documented as to what it's used for. You have to be able to keep records of it and note it, so the 10% that is retained is specific to the administration of the district. So what public improvements can we use TIF for? We can use it to fund, really, projects or costs that are related to the development. We can use it to fund streets and roads, utilities, bridges or interchanges, parking, sidewalks, walkways, as well as engineering costs related to the design of those types of things. We can't use it for city halls or fire departments or any other general use or general government use type, type entities, and we can't use it for recreational facilities or cultural facilities either. Those things have been limited or no longer available to be used for, for TIF purposes. So the idea with statute and the use of TIF is that it's confined or directly related to the, to the development that's being, that is generating the tax increment revenue. So when we talk about TIF, we're talking about a future source of revenue. We're talking about the tax dollars that might be generated by a project over the next 15 to 20 to 26 years. So the question is, how do we use that future source of revenue to fund project costs that'll be incurred related to that project today? So there's two ways that, that gets used. It's, one is either to do it on a pay-as-you-go basis, and a pay-as-you-go basis, the developer will be funding all those costs upfront, they'll be reimbursed by tax increment to the extent that it's generated, and they'll be reimbursed for those costs over the term of the TIF district or over the term of the development agreement. And that reimbursement is limited to the amount of TIF that's actually collected or generated. The important thing to remember when we talk about each of these two financing options is where does the risk fall? On a pay-as-you-go TIF project, the risk falls on the developer. If the tax increment revenue is less than projected, if it's tax rate changes, you know, there's been, historically, there has been changes in tax law within, property tax law within Minnesota that has resulted in tax increment revenue being different from what it was originally projected to be. In those circumstances, that risk falls on the developer. The city's not obligated to make any payments beyond what is obligated within the development agreement, and that's the tax increment revenue that's being generated. So the risk falls on the developer under a pay-as-you-go scenario. The other end of that spectrum is the city can use, if they wish, they, they can use to issue general obligation tax increment bonds. That's a case where the city would be taking on that risk. They would be issuing debt with the idea that that future debt service on that debt would be funded by tax increment revenue. And the use of tax increment debt, you, you do need to identify that at least 20% of the debt service costs would be paid for by tax increment. There are circumstances where you could anticipate already levying at the time that the, that the debt is issued. The important thing to remember with tax increment bonds is they're, obviously, the city's option if they chose to use them, and they're, they're very selectively used by cities around the state, very, for very transformative projects and for projects that, or the costs that might be very public in nature. So they are, they are used, the circumstances is limited, and it's obviously up to each city council if they sort of chose to go down that route. But the important thing is that it's remembering where does that risk spectrum fall on a pay-as-you-go tip, which is being discussed here, that, that future performance risk does fall on the developer. So what qualifies a district for eligibility as a housing tax increment district? So the idea behind the allowance for a housing tax increment district is the creation of new affordable housing within the city. In order to ensure that that housing is created, the project that's located within a housing TIF district has to meet either one of two tests for the creation of affordable housing units. Either 20% of the total units created within the development have to be set aside for people with income of no greater than 50% of the county median income, or 40% of the total apartment units have to be occupied by persons with incomes no greater than 60% of the county median income. So that's a test that the developer will have to meet each year. They will have to, they'll have to certify that and provide documentation to the city each year during the course of the tick, of the TIF district to ensure that that amount has, or that that amount has been set aside for people of low and moderate income. So in order to receive their annual tax increment revenue, a developer will have to certify that to the city, and the city would confirm or verify that information, and then they would ultimately make the annual pay-go obligation payment. So it's something that's gonna require ongoing effort, ongoing maintenance by the developer in, in order to ensure that, that they are meeting in, in compliance with that. And furthermore, the statute does limit that no more than 15% of the buildings within the tax increment district, or the buildings that were funded with tax increment, can, can contain non-housing related uses. They want to specify, by statute, they want to specify that the majority of the buildings that are created within a housing district are going towards housing purposes. They don't want you to be able to create a housing TIF district that has 50% retail in it, because it doesn't go towards the, the nature of the use of the, of the housing tax increment district. So there is a limit that no more than 15% of the buildings that receive tax increment assistance can contain non-housing uses. So how is a TIF district created or modified? To begin with, cities have to adopt a development district. A development district is a larger area within which individual TIF districts can be created. The city has already done this, I believe it is a citywide area, or it's a larger area.
Not quite citywide.
It is citywide, okay.
Not quite.
No, not quite citywide. I, I knew it was close, but I knew, I don't, I didn't have that, I didn't pull up the TIF line on, with me, but it's a larger area within which a number of the city's TIF districts have been created. So that, that, that development district kind of gets created and doesn't really have a whole lot of power to it, or doesn't have, get a whole lot of modification or use. The, the main point of that is simply for purposes of creating house, or tax increment districts within it. The one thing with the development district is TIF districts have the ability to pool funds amongst each other if, if, if needed for specific purposes, and the pooling of those funds, and which is limited also by statute, can only be done within the boundaries of the development district. So when the, when you're creating a tax increment district, the first thing you do is you adopt a TIF plan. So the TIF plan is a budget that identify, or a TIF plan is a document that identifies the budget for the tax increment district, the, both the revenues and the expenses for the TIF district. It identifies the geographic boundaries of the TIF district, what areas are gonna be captured within the district, and where is that development going to occur, and it identifies the purpose of the district, is it a housing district, is it a redevelopment district, and so on. As part of the process, you will, you will hold a public... As part of the process, you will hold a public hearing. That public hearing has to be noticed no more than 30 days prior to the public hearing, no less than 10. And then following the adoption of the TIF plan at the public hearing, then you would have the certification of the district to the county and the state. So the process for approving or modifying a TIF district is approximately 60 days from the approval process, and it includes a couple other notifications that have to be done. Including it in the notifications is that the county and school district have to be provided a copy of the TIF plan no more than or no less than 30 days prior to the public hearing. There's the publication of the public hearing notice. The planning commission does review the proposed development to make a finding that the proposed development conforms to the city's overall plan for development as a whole. And then ultimately, that leads up to the holding of the public hearing. It's important to remember that when we talk about the modification of a TIF district, the modification of a district is specific or is specifically defined as an expansion of the scope of the district to include either new land area and/or increase the budget of the district. So when we talk about setting a TIF plan, it's similar to the way the city would set the preliminary levy. You have a preliminary levy that sets your budget authority, and you can go down from that number without having to further modify the district or in this case or modify the levy, but you can't go up from that number. So the TIF plan sets the overall budget authority for the district as a whole, but we can go back from that. You can have a development agreement that would be for something less than the total budget of the TIF plan. You don't need to go through the modification process to shrink the scope of the use of the tax increment from what was originally contemplated. You can have a multi-phase project and then ultimately only have a single phase that gets developed. That wouldn't require a formal modification of the TIF district from a statutory process. One of the benefits of leaving the TIF district as is is that it avoids having to go through the administrative process of modifying it. It also provides flexibility if there is future later phases of development that were also that were to come back and seek additional assistance in the future. It maintains that flexibility. So what we're talking about here in terms of the change of the scope of the development would not rise to the need to create or formally modify the TIF district. The TIF district sets the budget authority. It sets the maximums. But you can ultimately have development that occurs or assistance that's provided that's less than that without having to go through any of the formal statutory process. So this is the original map that was included within the PowerPoint presentation that I provided last time. Ultimately, this has been created into a couple new parcels, but you can see the boundaries of the TIF district that when it was originally created. So all of this area is within the TIF district, and it was originally proposed to be... Ultimately, it was going to be a multi-phase project that was going to be developed over a number of years. You guys are familiar with most of this. However, the developers decided to only complete the first building, and they'll be selling the remaining property. The original development agreement that was entered into at the time the TIF plan was adopted was based off the development of the property or the project as a whole. It was based off the multi-phase development. So the development agreement was set based on that. The amount of assistance was provided was set based on that full scope, as well as the need for assistance was determined based on that whole scope. So now that the scope is being proposed to be shrunk to just a single phase, we felt it was warranted and necessary to update those numbers to reflect what is now the revised project scope, which is the single 36-unit building. So revisions to the scope included revisions to the development agreement, revisions to the assistance amount, and then verification that the single project on its own warranted assistance as well since that original determination was made on the project as a whole. So again, these revisions don't require a modification of the TIF district in the formal sense of the statutory definition of the modification because we're not increasing the land area and we're not increasing the budget. So the revised Phase 1 TIF assumptions are now a simple, simply a 36-unit apartment project instead of the multi-phase project. The TIF projections were prepared based on the completed market value of the project as of January 2018, which is $1,980,200, and that was provided by Otter Tail County. So the tax increment revenues are updated to be based off of that number. So using that number as the post-development value, we generated additional or projected future tax increment revenues based on that. The first tax increment revenue would be generated in 2019, for taxes payable 2019. And the TIF revenues are based on the frozen tax rate of 120%, or 120.493%. So when a TIF district is created, the tax increment or the tax rate that is in place at the time that district is created is the highest tax rate that could be potentially used for the creation of tax increment revenue. Tax increment revenue is generated annually based on either the current tax rate or the frozen tax rate that was in place at the time it was adopted, whichever is less. So in this case, in 2016, when the district was adopted, the frozen tax rate was 120%. The tax rate subsequently gone up slightly from that. So the tax increment revenue is actually going to be generated by that lower percentage rate that was in place at the time the district was created. And there will actually be a little bit of additional property tax revenue that will be generated for each of the taxing entities based off that slight increase in tax rate. And in carrying over previous assumptions, we did assume a 2% market value inflation when we projected the tax increment revenues. So utilizing that information, we updated the amount of assistance that the project or that the TIF revenue stream would be capable of generating. So the assistance amount was amended to be based on the Phase 1 project at 36 units only and was updated based on the increased market value as provided by the county. So using those numbers, the updated assistance amount was revised to $389,100 to be provided on a pay-as-you-go basis. That utilized the 5% interest rate that was carried over from the prior agreement, and it utilizes the 20-year repayment period that was carried over from the original development agreement. Based on that, the final payment would occur in 2038, and that assistance amount would be reimbursable or payable only from 90% of the tax increment revenue that's generated by this parcel. So again, the developer will be taking on all that risk. And if that tax increment revenue is insufficient to repay that amount over the 20-year period, the developer would be reimbursed less than the full amount, and the city would have no obligation. So in addition to both updating the TIF revenue projections and revising the assistance amount, we also wanted to verify the need for assistance. So at the time the project was originally created, we reviewed the four-phase performer that the developer had prepared, and we reviewed both the operating costs and project costs, operating revenues and project costs. And we utilized that information to prepare a determination that the project did warrant the use of assistance. So as part of this process, we wanted to update that because we did have a smaller project. We did have fundamentally a different project than what we had originally analyzed. So we did perform an updated review of the project performer, which is the operating assumptions, the project cost, and the projected revenues that will be realized by the project. And we utilized that information to calculate what the developer's internal rate of return would be over a 10-year period for the project, both with and without assistance. So when we try to answer this but-for question, which is a bit esoteric in nature, we try to solve for it mathematically. We try to look at it on the basis of what would be the developer's financial return to the project without assistance, and is that a reasonable return and would that be a feasible return? And conversely, we then use that number, we compare what would that rate of return be with assistance? Is that now going to change a project from having an unfeasible level of return to now make it feasible because we've now layered in the assistance? So to try to answer that abstract but-for question, we try to do it by looking at the financial return to the developer with the realization that a real estate development does warrant a level of return in accordance with the amount of risk that's being taken by a real estate development. So when we looked at this project without assistance, the projected internal rate of return on an unleveraged basis to the developer was 5%. A third-party benchmark that we use to help identify what a feasible or reasonable rate of return is identifies a national average for apartment projects of 7.26%. So when we looked at this, you can see that there's a pretty significant spread without assistance between what the rate of return to the developer would be versus what a standard benchmark for a feasible project would be. So between 5% and 7.26% is a reasonable spread on an unleveraged basis. So when we looked at that without assistance, we did make the determination that the project would be unlikely to proceed absent the requested assistance. And then when we did add in what the calculated return would be, once we factored in that assistance, it did raise the with-assistance return to 7.06% with assistance. So again, it made the project move from an unfeasible level at 5% to a feasible rate at 7%. And that's still aligned with and just slightly below what a national average would be, which allowed us to realize that the return with assistance was not unreasonable and sure that the city was not over-incenting the project by providing the TIF assistance. So based on that review, we did find that the project, based on the reduced scope of just the 36 units, that assistance was still warranted to the project and that the amount was not unreasonable. I guess with that, I'll turn it over for questions.
Thank you, Tom. Questions?
I got a few questions, actually. Obviously, so the first thing that kind of concerns me a little bit is that it's gone from $235,000. I'm going to round numbers, not do this. And basically, we're increasing it to buy about $155,000. So that's kind of quite a big jump in the...
Oh, yeah. So there was a set of projections that were prepared, I think in mid-August, that were based on a market value assumption that was provided by Otter Tail County. Shortly before the last memo was prepared, we had followed up with Otter Tail County to confirm the value, and they actually did get back to us that there was an error in their data entry error in their software system that they were quoting us the wrong market value amount for the project post-development. So they came back to us and identified that the updated value was $1.9 million based on when they corrected the error in their system, frankly.
So just to add.
Yeah.
Mayor, Councilmember Hicks, the original estimated TIF note was going to be $1.6 million, 1.622.
Yeah, for the whole project.
For the whole project. And then there was when we did a preliminary estimate, as Mr. Denaway expressed, the county inadvertently had provided us the incorrect number on that value. So this is the corrected number.
Can we send a note to the county for the difference of the $155,000?
Right. And so in the track changes, that in the agreement, I wasn't here when that was provided, but there was another version that had the original $1.6 million.
And then I got some more questions unless somebody else has got questions.
Go ahead.
All right, okay. So basically, it was the county's error on that one, obviously. I actually want to know what obligation we actually have now because obviously, you know, the project is physically now built. You know, they haven't been the most cooperative developer. You know, we've had a lot of issues with them. And so, you know, we've had obviously a number of calls, you know, from the city law enforcement department out there, as well as, I think, the fire brigade. So, you know, what actual obligation do we have legally? Because they also, I don't, you know, to assign the project, they have to, there's an assignment that had to come to the council, and they're now trying to wrap this all into one. And I kind of, I'm not comfortable with the way that this is going ultimately.
Mayor, Councilmember Hicks, you're correct. That assignment did require an approval by the city council, and we felt it wasn't the best course of action to bring just the assignment forward, not knowing if they were going to comply with the plat or those other conditions. So kind of keeping them all grouped together. We've known about the sale as we've been working through resolving the more immediate issues of the site conditions, the parking, those other items that have now been addressed. So that is the leverage point that we have, is that assignment. The developer did build that project with the assurance of the city that the assistance would be provided. So that's something to keep in mind that, you know, it was, that investment was made. There is a $1.9 million project on the tax rolls now, and that investment was made with the assurance that they would be receiving the tax increment financing.
But equally, from the city's perspective, the city gave them that incentive for them to do a good job out there, and we've had to put a lot of effort into making it happen. And I mean, the other question I have is obviously, you know, initially, they paid monies to obviously do the original study. All of these extra work that we've had to do, who's paying for that?
Sure. Mayor, Councilmember Hicks, we are receiving an additional deposit. Then they will need to pay any expenses related to Springstead, as well as Briggs &amp; Morgan, our development attorney for this project, as a condition of execution of the agreement should it proceed. So the developer will bear those costs. And then staff is also utilizing that 10% of admin that was referenced for the TIF district to cover our expenses specific to the TIF component of the project.
Anthony, you got it? I've got some more, but I'd like to ask some else. And then I wanted to know why, obviously, looking at it in the assistance amount, it's a 5% interest rate and a 20-year pay-as-you-go. But typically, wouldn't that be a 25-year? Would that lessen the amount of 389 or not? Or it would change their rate of return, their internal rate of return?
Thank you, Councilmember Hicks, Mayor, Members of the Council. The $300,000 amount was calculated based off the capacity of the project over the 21-year period. So we carried over the original development agreement term, or 20-year period, excuse me, from the original development agreement. So the capacity of the TIF revenue to fund that is based off the 5% interest, and it's based off the 20-year term. The idea being that we wanted to have, when the TIF district was originally created, a project that had a shorter term or shorter life than the full statutory potential of a district. We wanted to be able to have this be a shorter period and get the project back on the tax rolls. So we carried over that assumption. So the rate of return is based off the 20-year period based off that amount at 5%.
Can I just reiterate, just so that the 5% is included? I just was piggybacking on the 5% is included in that 300-some-thousand figure?
That's, that would be the principal amount. That amount would be reimbursed as the principal amount plus 5% interest.
Plus 5%, so 5% over that period of time is how much additional money that
Oh, okay, yes.
will be paid to...
Yeah, if you look at the last page of the memo, you can see the repayment, the amortization schedule of that $389,000. Over the lifetime of that, the potential interest that would be paid if it came in as projected would be $260,302. So the total principal and interest paid on that.
Add it on to the 300.
Yeah. So the total principal and interest paid would be $649,402.
By the city.
By the tax increment revenue.
Yeah, by...
By the city to the developer.
Okay. So that's the total after 20 years?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
My only other question is, are they actually 100% complete on everything?
Your Honor, Councilmember Hicks, as far as site issues and those types of issues, they're all resolved. The remaining issues are a variance request, which will go before the board of zoning next Monday, and then the council in two weeks, and then the final plat, which will go before the planning commission next Monday and before the council in two weeks, and then the action on this TIF component, which would be contemplated by the city council in two weeks.
One quick math question, just getting back to the original increase from about not quite $400,000 from the Otter Tail County's first number that they gave us. And that wasn't wrong or incorrect, and now it's $300,000 higher to the 1.98 figure. And so that generates a $155,000 increase in the TIF?
That would be in the principal amount of the TIF. So when we set the...
Over the 20, over that 20 years, then, about eight grand a year?
So, yes. When we projected the TIF revenues, we started with the market value, ran it through the TIF calculation based on the tax rates and everything. And then we set out what the total amount of revenue generated over that 20-year period would be. And then we backed into what that present value or the principal amount of that note would be. So when that market value shifted from, I can't remember what it said, 1.3 to 1.9, that increased the TIF revenue stream because the tax increment revenue is ultimately based on how much does the market value increase over the base value of the property? So the more market value that's generated, the higher the amount of taxes that would be paid by the property, the greater the tax increment revenue would be. So that's how we ultimately ended up at the 1.9 number. The $390,000 was based on the revised market value as provided by the county. Does that answer your question?
No, it's going to generate more probably. Go ahead, down the line here, so.
I have a question. I'll jump in. On slide nine of the questionnaire or your slide presentation, it talked about the minimums, I believe, for occupancy as far as low income and moderate income. And if I remember right from the original TIF before it became, before it's originally, this building was more for low income, and his future projects were going to be for more high-end income. I was just wondering, is there a, being that he's not continuing with the other buildings, is there a maximum amount of the occupancy could be considered low income? Or is it just set as a minimum?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember, Mayor, Members of the Council. Yeah, that is the... Yeah, thank you, Councilmember, Mayor members of the council. Yeah, that is the minimum that needs to be met by the developer. They could make the entire project 100% affordable if they so choose, but the, from a statutory standpoint, the requirement is that the threshold or the minimum threshold is that 20% of the units or 40% of the units be set aside. Yeah.
Mayor, Councilmember Arnison, just a, just a reminder on how that it is about the, the income of the occupant, not about the rents of the units. So each unit is the same. And whether it's rented to somebody who meets that income requirement or not, that's, you know, so it's, it's not a set aside of a unit, if that makes sense.
Right.
And so it's just a qualification that 20% of the units need to be rented to people of a certain income. It does not impact the rent that is charged to those, those occupants.
All right. Thanks for clarifying. Thank you. Rod?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. I understand there are, are there three total parcels there or four that now are, there's one parcel, but then there are two or three other parcels that will be sold? Is that my understanding?
Mayor, Councilmember Speedall, I'd have to pull up that, that plat, but the, the replat will be changing that configuration of the PIDs.
Right. So my question is, there will be some land to be sold since they are not developing it and they will sell it.
That is their intention, yes, that there's the acreage around the phase one and then the balance of the property.
And then to, to the Springstead study, that is that 7% reasonable or the other increase that you figured, does that factor in a value that, because we don't know yet what that's sold for. So let's say that's sold for a certain higher price. Is that, is that profit factored into that overall assessment of the agreement?
Thank you, Councilmember Speedall. Speedall?
Speedall.
Speedall, Mr. Mayor, council. We did not have an assumption for what the market value or the, the sale value of those parcels would be, so that is not factored into the rate of return that we projected for the developer. In order to account for that, when we looked at what the cost that the developer was incurring as part of the project was, we prorated it to include just the portion of the land applicable to the site that's being developed. So when we, when we run that rate of return, we only counted the, you know, their pro right of share of the land acquisition as just that portion of the plat that they're developing the 36 units on. And we left the cost of acquiring that other land as well as the profit from potential sale price of selling that other land are both outside of that, that rate of return analysis.
And the reason I ask, Your Honor and others, is that we have a grant in for a trail proposal, which will take us down to Barefoot Park. And I, I just thought about the assess, you know, the value the county, that, that they purchased it for and then the value that you have of the project, but that these parcels, to me, represent a bit of a wild card in the sense that we don't know how that factors into the, the ultimate rate that they are going to be receiving. You know, the but-for agreement is based on, you said, a reasonable argument that they couldn't really do it but for this TIF. So I'm just verifying in my own mind that we can't really, you can't really do anything about that with this revised agreement. Is that correct? I mean, they, they will be able to sell those and that doesn't factor into anything else we're doing.
Thank you, Councilmember, Mayor's, Mayor members of the council. Yes. They, when we calculated the rate of return, we, the rate of return is a factor of both the investment in the project as well as the revenues that would be generated by the project. So what we sought to do was isolate this rate of return analysis to just the 36-unit phase that would be part of this development. And we left both the cost and the investment in the purchase of that other property outside of that analysis, as well as the potential return related to the sale of that property outside this analysis. So there could be some, some level of return that would be generated by that to the developer. It's just unknown at this point. We tried to, we tried to account for that by not giving them, what would have been incorrect would have said, would have been to calculate that 7% return by including that entire cost of acquiring all that property and not counting the revenue. So the best thing we could do, given that we don't know what the sale price of that property would be, would just prorate that analysis to show just the, the rate of return on the phase one itself and leave the rest of that, both the cost and the potential revenue, out of that analysis and let that be a separate, a separate piece.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Yes. Any, any other questions, Mr. Denaway?
Thank you, Mr. Denaway. Thank you.
There is no old or unfinished business that I'm aware of. There's no new business that I'm aware of. Under miscellaneous updates and announcements, one week from this evening, October 8th, 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Fire Hall, will be the Fire Department Spaghetti Cookoff at Open House. Two weeks from this evening, October 15th, at 7:00 p.m. at Legacy Hall. The library and the Viking Library System and the St. Paul's Library is sponsoring a, an event called Moving Words Writers Across Minnesota, which will feature four Minnesota authors, Gary Conanen, Kathy Schwen, Will Weaver, and Diane Wilson. So we hope that you all will join us for that conversation. Just wanted to briefly mention, grant that the city's working on with the HRA through the Department of Employment and Economic Development, a small cities development grant program, which is focusing on a neighborhood that stretches from Arlington to Oak, Vernon to Channing. And the program is, would provide qualifying homeowners up to $25,000 in grants at 0% interest that would be forgiven at 10% over 10 years. So we're in the process of applying for that grant. We would hope that anyone, any homeowners or renters living in Arlington, that district, again, from Arlington to Oak, Vernon to Channing, would fill out an application because the application success is based on the quality and number of applicants.
So they received a letter to the...
So there's been two letters that have gone out and we've done some canvassing of the neighborhoods, but we just really encourage homeowners to take advantage of this program because it's just, it's a good, it's obviously, we could use that investment in our neighborhoods. One last thing, the, the striping is going on, on the downtown parking lot tonight. I think it's the American Federal Parking Lot. So if you're out there in the American Federal Parking Lot, get out. I don't want to strike.
Just want to know, I don't see it, maybe I might have missed it, but October 6th is our October Trail Fest, Fergus Falls. So that will include all of the trails that are involved, the North Country Trail, starting with the mountain biking at Ferber Park at 8:30 a.m. on Saturday, and then hiking on the North Country Trail, and then some kayaking and other activities on the river, depending on the temperature probably. But October 6th, that's pretty much all day.
Coming Saturday.
Yes, it is coming Saturday. Thank you.
Anthony?
One bit of good information or good news that I wanted to share. Last week, Don Rochester, on September 26th, our recently retired city planner, Gordon Hidukovich, was awarded a Lifetime Achievement Award from the Minnesota APA, which is the American Planning Association. Unfortunately, Gordon's been a little under the leather and wasn't able to attend, but one of his former students and longtime friend Cindy Gray was there to accept the award on his behalf. So I want to extend a congratulations to Gordon. Quite the honor and very well deserved.
Very well deserved. Anything else to come before the council?